We'll go ahead and get the meeting called to order. It looks like with the roll call, we're all here with the exception of Mark. Correction, Mark is here. Sorry, everybody, I've been fighting head cold here for the better part of a week, so maybe a little... Sorry for the coughing and that kind of stuff, I guess, in advance. Approval of the July 22, 2019 minutes. Are there any corrections or comments to the minutes? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Motion in second, further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Today's agenda consists of 25 items. Are there any changes requested to the agenda? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I saw move for approval.
Second.
Motion in second, further discussion on the approval of the agenda. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to the consent agenda.
Good morning, Planning Commission Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. The consent agenda starts with item three, which is Conditional Use Permit Review 1424 for Lawrence Meeger and Margaret Schalke. To review a single wide mobile home as a single-family residence in a low-density residential district, staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1424 with six conditions. Item four, Conditional Use Permit Review 1515 for Gerald Meredith. To review a caretaker's residence on the subject property in a suburban residential district, staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1515 with five conditions. Item five, Conditional Use Permit Review 1526 for Richard Burton. To review an existing accessory structure, a garage, and a new accessory structure, a pole barn, prior to a principal structure on the subject property in a low-density residential district, staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit 1526 as it is no longer needed. Item six, Conditional Use Permit Review 1615 for Tom or Lynn Disler. To review a recreational vehicle to be used as a temporary residence while building a single-family residence on the subject property in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends to end Conditional Use Permit 1615 as it is no longer needed. Item seven, Conditional Use Permit Review 1731 for Jack Anderson. To review a double-wide mobile home to be used as a caretaker's residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue the review of Conditional Use Permit 1731 to the August 26, 2019 Planning Commission meeting. Item eight, Conditional Use Permit Review 1827 for John and Vicki Hanson. To review a recreational vehicle to be used for no more than 180 calendar days on the subject property seasonally and to also allow a carport to cover the recreational vehicle and deck in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1827 with 10 conditions. Item nine, Conditional Use Permit Review 1828 for Harry and Gail McCain. To review living in the existing residence while building a new single-family residence on the subject property in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1828 with eight conditions. Item 10, Conditional Use Permit Review 1832 for Katrina Roseland. To review a caretaker's residence on the subject property in a suburban residential district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1832 with seven conditions. Item 11, Conditional Use Permit Review 1843 for Border States Paving, Jason Weddles as the agent. To review a temporary asphalt batch plant and contractor's storage area on the subject property in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Conditional Use Permit 1843 with 13 conditions. Item 12, Conditional Use Permit 1919 for Dale and Sarah Gabboy. To review a secondary structure prior to a primary residence in a general agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit 1919 with 12 conditions. Layout Plat LPL 1923 for Faith Lewis, Robert Christman. To create Jack Link or Jinx tract in accordance with Section 400.1 of the Pennington County Subdivision Regulations. Staff recommends approval of the withdrawal of Layout Plat 1923 per the applicant's request. And item 14, Minor Plat 1925 for Julie Benson Wilber to create lots one and two of Thorstens and Benson Ranch subdivision. Staff recommends to continue Minor Plat 1925 till no later than the September 23, 2019 Planning Commission meeting in order for the applicant to submit percolation tests and soil profile whole information or to submit a subdivision regulations variance waiving those requirements.
Thank you. Are there any items that staff would like to pull?
No.
Any items that the commission would like to pull?
Number 11.
Number 11?
I have something to say.
Go ahead.
It's a general question, but it regards at least three, maybe four, of the items on the consent agenda. The caretaker's residence, I guess I just don't recall seeing before. All of these cases where number one, a doctor's note is required. And number two, once the person no longer needs assistance, then the use of a caretaker's resident goes away. And so I just wondered if this was something new. I just don't recall seeing that type of comments in times past.
We don't do very many caretaker's residences, but they are all the same. Caretaker's residences are meant to be temporary in nature, which is why we require the doctor's note verifying that there is still someone that needs care. And also, once the care is no longer needed, the caretaker's residence either has to be removed from the property or the property has to be subdivided so each residence is on its own lot. That's been the standard for caretaker's residences for quite some time, but we don't do very many of them.
I see, okay. It just seemed to be quite a number of them in this particular meeting. And then I also would like number 11 pulled.
Okay. For the audience members, we vote on all of the items on the consent agenda with one vote of the board. Are there any of the items of the consent agenda that anyone from the audience would like pulled from the consent agenda? And that is items three through 14. Okay, seeing none, the consent agenda consists of items three through 10 and 12 through 14. Is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion in second, any further discussion on those items? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item number 11.
Yeah, I'm just bringing this up because I had a little bit of a concern on number four, A, where the staff performed a site visit and noticed that the area where the batch plant was located had been disturbed, but the batch plant's no longer there and the site has not been reclaimed. Are you, are we... Have they been operating there previously and didn't clean it up or what was... Just expand on that a little bit.
Kili Sack, Environmental Planner. I, from my understanding is yes, they have been working, but I tried contacting them, but I don't think that the number that they applied with back in December is the same number that they use. I don't think Jason Weddles is working for Border States Paving anymore, so I'm trying to find out who the contact is to see what their plan is and what they're working on because with no batch plant there, it kind of, to me, seems like the work's done, but, you know, I don't want to move forward thinking that the work's done with them actually not being done and that something just came up and they had to remove that off of there for now. I'm not too concerned with erosion, they have it bermed around, so the site's contained. I just don't know what their plans are because I can't get a hold of them. So sometime this week, I'll send them a letter if I can't get a hold of them or if I can't reach them by email.
So I guess my question would be, since we are unaware of their plans or what they're doing, why aren't we asking for a continuance as opposed to an approval?
We, I mean, we could continue it with the 13 conditions. The only reason why I didn't is because with that disturbed, one of the conditions in there is that they have to still meet the requirement to re-vegetate it, so they still have to meet that requirement. So we could, it could be continued with those 13 conditions though, so it still stays where they have to meet those conditions. I just, some people get confused when you continue it with no conditions, that they don't have to no longer meet those other conditions.
Right.
So I just wanted to keep that in there, but you could definitely continue it and keep those 13 conditions in there, so they have to re-vegetate it until we can reach them and figure out what their plans actually are.
I guess my question is, is are they continuing, are they planning on, and maybe you don't know this, are they planning on continuing to run a batch plant on that location?
I'm not sure.
And is that why they haven't?
Yeah, reclaimed it, yeah, yeah. And that's what I'm trying to figure out by contacting them because I, like I said, you know, you'd think that with them taking the batch plant off there that it would be, they'd be done with the work, but, you know, that batch plant could have been taken off two days before I got there and they just haven't had time to reclaim it yet or...
Okay.
That's why I kind of want to talk to them first, but when you call that number, it just rings and rings and rings for minutes.
I would recommend that we continue this with the conditions as opposed to approve it. That would be my motion.
Yeah, and my question is, why would we approve the continuation of something when it appears as if they have ceased to use it? To me, in my mind, I would quit, quit the approval, cancel the Conditional Use Permit and hold them accountable for the reseeding or refurbishing or, you know, the repair of the ground. It seems ludicrous to continue it if they aren't doing it anymore and if they aren't responding and particularly if they haven't requested it.
Keeping the Conditional Use Permit to a certain extent allows us to have a little more teeth in requiring them to re-vegetate and make sure that they meet these conditions. It still maintains those conditions on the use that was there. Even if that use is not there anymore, it still allows us to enforce these conditions and require that they do reclamation and re-vegetation and things along those lines.
So I think I heard you say that if the conditional use expires or is not renewed, that you no longer have any authority to enforce the conditions under which it was originally granted? Is that what you're saying?
When you end the Conditional Use Permit, the conditions go away too. Generally, it's because that use is no longer there anymore, so we don't need the conditions anymore. Cody's just trying to make sure that it does get re-vegetated and reclaimed. We can continue it, Cody does have a condition in here that it be reviewed in three more months, so it will get reviewed again whether you continue it or whether you approve just the extension.
And the permit remains in force?
Right.
Even though we're continuing it?
Yes.
Until such time that we do the next review in three months?
Yes, yep, if you continue it or if you approve the extension of it, it still remains in effect. They're still held to these conditions. If you end it, they're not necessarily held to these conditions anymore.
Okay, I'm not suggesting we end it.
Yeah.
Well, at what point do you hold them accountable for the conditions? I mean, if in three months, the same scenario exists, we want another three months, another three months, at what point do we enforce the conditions?
Cody is only asking for it to be continued right now because it seems like the contact potentially has changed, so we just haven't been able to get a hold of them. We don't know what their plan is, whether they are actually done with the batch plant or not, whether they, like Cody said, just moved it for a couple of days. We don't know what their situation is, so we don't also want to yank their Conditional Use Permit when they have plans to actually bring the batch plant back in two weeks or a month or something along those lines.
I hear what you are saying, but my question was, at what point do we enforce the conditions, the re-vegetation, et cetera?
I'd have to know if they were done to force that, to enforce that condition because if they're not, it's to be re-vegetated when the work is complete. We wouldn't make them re-vegetate halfway through just to disturb it again so that they have another, put another batch plant there. So that's why, one, so basically what will happen is if they say that they're done, we'll give them a certain amount of time to get that re-vegetated because it just, re-vegetation doesn't happen overnight. There's one up on 385 and 44 that took the whole from August to May to re-vegetate. So basically what will happen is as long as they work with us, we'll keep working with them, but after a while, we'll just start continuing it and continuing it and they'll have to keep paying the $100 continuation fee every week until it's done if they're not working.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So if I understand you correctly, every time we do a continuation, they're going to get charged $100.
If it's...
Especially since you haven't been able to reach out and make contact with them.
Yes, if it's due to they're not meeting the conditions, yes.
Okay, now, if, how long are you going to give them, and this might answer your question better, or maybe help get us to kind of focus in, what is the standard for if you reach out to them for three months and you don't hear back or anything? When do you say, okay, now we're going to end it, now we're going to move forward with the reclamation from the county side of things?
I'm not sure on that one because that would be, if we moved on and, you're talking about like re-vegetating it ourself?
Yeah, like we've done in other scenarios where, you know, the property owners failed or we said, hey, we're going to do this if you don't do it. When does, when does that kick in? I think that's more of what she's trying to get at.
That's actually what Michelle was just telling...
I was wondering if that's what she was coming here to talk to you about.
Yeah, that's what Michelle was just bringing up, is that there will come a point where if they aren't working with us, if they refuse to re-vegetate it and reclaim it and meet that condition, then we could end the Conditional Use Permit and pursue an ordinance violation, which would then invoke all of those things and our ability to abate if necessary, which would mean that we would re-vegetate it at their cost.
Right, and how long do you look at that? In other words, you know, kind of to Sandy's point, if you're trying to reach out to them, do you put a timeframe on it as, we're going to try for three months if we don't? Then we look at that as an option? Do we do it for six months and then look at that as an option?
It's a kind of a case-by-case thing, just depending on if we actually do reach anybody, if they are willing to work with us or if they just kind of blow us off and we never get a hold of anyone.
I guess in order to keep this item moving forward, I would recommend that we continue this item for two weeks to allow Cody enough time to call the company and not just the contact, call the company number, explain to them the situation, tell them that we need an answer on this so we understand the process for us to move forward on their current Conditional Use Permit. What's everyone's thoughts on that?
We have a motion and a second on that, that exact...
Yep. There was a motion in second?
There was.
The motion.
Okay, seconded. All right, any further discussion then?
Would you repeat the motion out loud, please?
The motion was to continue for two weeks till the next Planning Commission meeting and give Cody a chance to...
Thank you.
And it was to keep all those intact.
And to keep the conditions intact, correct.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item number 15.
Good morning, Christina Proetti, Planner One. Item number 15 is Conditional Use Permit of 1918. This is to allow an existing single-family residence to be used as a vacation home rental in a low-density residential district. This one, however, would like, we would like to continue it until the owners are able to update their septic system. Right now, they are sized for three bedrooms and they are proposing a four-bedroom vacation home rental, so we would, staff recommends to continue it till no later than the November 12 meeting to give them time to come into compliance with their septic.
Have they been, have you had this conversation with them and are they agreeing to go down that path?
Yeah, I have, with their agent. The agent's in contact with the owner.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any further questions?
My question was just, I got confused as to whether or not it's three or four bedrooms.
The plans that they turned in to us when they, and I believe it was 1995, for the residence was a three-bedroom house, when they applied for the Conditional Use Permit for this vacation home rental, the plans show a four-bedroom house. So I'm giving them time to come into compliance.
I'm sorry, so what actually is happening? Is it a three-bedroom home or is it a four-bedroom home?
Well, right now, it's a four-bedroom home. In 1995, the plan showed a three-bedroom home, but they must have added a bedroom, so they need to upgrade their septic to fit how many bedrooms are for that residence because right now they're undersized.
If there's no further questions, I would entertain a motion to continue this item.
Move to approve continuance.
Oh, second?
Motion in second, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item 16.
Cassie Bolstead, Assistant Planning Director, again. Item 16 is Conditional Use Permit 1920. This is a request to allow an existing residence to be used as a vacation home rental in a general agriculture district. The applicant is Cody Russ Butler. As this property exists today, it is owned general agriculture district, consists of 21.79 acres, accesses off of Marshall Gulch Road, and it currently contains a single-family residence, a detached garage, a couple loafing sheds, and an onsite wastewater treatment system. There is also a special flood hazard area on this property, which it looks like all of the existing structures are within that area. This request was routed through the interdepartmental review process, nothing of significant concern came back that would warrant the need to continue or deny this request. Basically, what she is looking to do is this is an existing two-bedroom residence. This came about in February of this year. We received information that there was a vacation home rental being operated on this property without an approved Conditional Use Permit. We did contact the applicant, she did have to go through a few things regarding the flood plane. She did some updates to this residence, and when you update things in a structure within a flood plane, it invokes some substantial improvement requirements. You can't improve it more than 50% of its market value without bringing it into full compliance with our flood plane regulations. So we did have to work with her for a little while, getting some receipts and some ideas of what she actually did improvements to within here to make sure that she didn't exceed that 50%. At this time, we have determined that she has not exceeded that 50% in substantial improvement, so she does not need any sort of flood plane development permit or anything at this point in time. So then in July, she did apply for this Conditional Use Permit. She has met all of the submittal requirements listed in Section 319 of our zoning ordinance. She has received approval from the Department of Environment and Natural Resources for a maximum overnight occupancy of six people. There are a few items that staff will need to have her address and they have been included as conditions of approval. They are pretty minor things. There will need to be an interior informational sign posted in accordance with Section 319. While the vacation home rental is in use, that will also need to include a colored flood plane map so that people understand that there is flood plane on that property. She will need an evacuation plan that needs to be provided to all overnight guests and maintained and up-to-date. And then the VRBO listing has a couple of conflicting numbers on it. There's one spot where it says that it sleeps eight and then one spot where it says the cabin sleeps six people. Since it's only approved for six, we'll just need her to correct that listing to reflect that six is the maximum occupancy. Other than that, staff did not find any significant issues, so we are recommending approval of Conditional Use Permit 1920 with 17 conditions.
Questions for staff on item 16? Go ahead.
Regarding the excavation plan, excavation emergency plan, what is the standard approach to that in places out in the hills where there's just really one road in, one road out and so on? What's the, what's kind of the approach that people take? And do you, does your staff, does your office actually go through an approval process saying that that is, or not, maybe not yours, but the emergency planning group within the county, do they, is there an approval step or is it just simply you receive it, you put it on file?
Yes, yep. We, our emergency management team doesn't review all of them. I mean, if it's, if there's some sort of craziness in terms of how egress would work, you know, I mean, if there's multiple ways out or something along those lines, we would probably have emergency management take a look at it. Otherwise, in a situation like this, it would essentially just be, we ask for a floor plan of the inside of the residence showing people where the exit doors actually are, how to get out, and then where to go once you are actually out of the building. So we've only had emergency management look at a few of them and, like I said, that's only been in terms of there's multiple ways to get out.
So really, it addresses more getting out of the structure?
Right.
Than concerned about the road situation?
Right, right. It's kind of like an emergency evacuation plan that you would see like in this building, like your exit doors are here, here, and, yeah.
I see, okay, thank you.
Further questions on item 16? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on item 16? Seeing none, we have a recommendation for approval of the Conditional Use Permit 1920 with 17 conditions, I would entertain a motion.
Move approval. I'll second.
Motion in second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Brings us to item 17.
Good morning, Brittany Molliter, Environmental Planning Supervisor. This item, you guys saw it the last, or the second, two meetings ago. This is a special consideration to Trowood Village Plan Unit Development. The request by the applicant is to reduce the minimum rear yard setback from 25 feet to 23 feet so she could build a garage. Then during the review process, we found that there were two sheds that encroach in the setbacks and into the eight-foot utility and drainage easements. So I worked with the applicant and so we re-advertise, or we didn't advertise this, but reconsidered this to bring in front of you guys to reduce the minimum rear yard setback from 25 feet to 23 feet and the rear and side yard setback from 25 to eight feet so she can move her sheds and keep her sheds. So that is the request. There's a shed there and then she is going to move that shed to meet that eight foot on the sides and eight foot on the rear.
Are there any utilities that are impacted?
We didn't hear back from the utility company out, actually, we did, West River Electric has no objections to the reduced setback.
Okay, and the garage that's being built on the, that'd be the east side of the house, there's no utility impacts to that?
No, that one would actually meet the side yard setback. She has a 10-foot setback from the property line on the side and then it'd be 23 from the rear.
Okay, I remember that we continued this item and what were the specific reasons that we continued the item?
Because the sheds were encroaching and then the one shed was actually in the utility easement and she would have had to vacate that utility easement through the city of Rapid City.
Okay.
Because it's in the three-mile plating jurisdiction, so she's decided just to move that out of the setback, so it'll meet the eight foot on the side and eight foot on the rear.
And so at this time, you are satisfied that their plan is acceptable to the county and meets all the side yard setbacks and utility setbacks?
Yes, if it did the side at eight feet and the rear at 23.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Oh, I was just going to ask, were the neighbors notified and was there any issues from the neighbors since they all have to have the same kind of rules?
We did not notify the neighbors on these special considerations. If you do look at the Trowood Village area, there is a lot of encroachments in this area.
Okay, fair enough.
That, I would note that the garage is on the east side and it looks like it butts a drainage. Mark, you had a question?
Travis answered it.
Okay. Any further questions before I go to the speaker request form? Okay, I have a speaker request form for this item, Misty LaBelle.
We actually only needed to speak if you guys had questions, but you know, if we needed to fill that out or not.
Understood, are there any questions for the applicant?
I can't hear what the applicant said.
Oh, go ahead and state your name for the record and then...
Misty LaBelle, and we just put in... Ms. DeLaBelle, and we just put in, just in case you needed to ask us questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing none, staff is recommending approval of special consideration of Trowood Village Plan Unit Development PU nineteen dash zero four, to reduce the minimum rear yard setback from twenty-five feet to twenty-three feet to allow for the construction of a garage, and to reduce the rear yard and side yard setbacks from twenty-five feet to eight feet to bring into compliance two existing sheds with the following two conditions. I would entertain a motion for approval.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none. Signify, got me screwed up here. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item number eighteen.
Item eighteen is a layout plan request, LPL nineteen twenty-two, to combine two lots to create Lot eighteen R of Gold Mountain subdivision. As the properties exist today, there is two lots, Lot seventeen of Gold Mountain subdivision, which is own low-density residential district, which requires a three-acre minimum. It is one-point-nine-six acres, and it's vacant of any structures, and has no special flood hazard area. Lot eighteen of Gold Mountain subdivision is own low-density residential district. It's seven-point-zero-five acres, and it does contain a single-family residence that was built nineteen ninety-seven and an onsite wastewater treatment system. The proposed lots would be Lot R, or, excuse me, the proposed lot would be Lot eighteen R, at nine-point-zero-one acres. It would still be own low-density residential district, so it would meet the minimum lot size requirements for that zoning district. There would still be a single-family residence in the onsite wastewater treatment system. This is just essentially to remove that center lot line. The applicant wants a larger building envelope on this property and areas to, so he can build. This was routed through the interdepartmental review. There was only one item of concern, that there was a first notice to have the septic pumped and inspected, and that will need to be done prior to moving forward with any of the plating process, and that is a condition of approval for the layout plan. So, staff is recommending approval of layout plat, LPL nineteen twenty-two, with nine conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, recommendation is for approval of LPL nineteen dash twenty-two with nine conditions. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion on the item? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Morning Commissioners. Sorry. Morning Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, County Planner. Item number nineteen is Layout Plan nineteen twenty-four and Subdivision Regulations Variance nineteen oh seven. Applicant is Olson Rental Properties LLC, Aaron Olson. Agent is fiscal and surveying. Neither are in the audience, so if you have any questions, hopefully I can answer them. Applicant has applied for layout plan and subdivision regulation variance in order to subdivide one existing lot and create two lots. Property is currently twenty-point-one-nine acres, own general agriculture district, takes access off of Dakota Road. There is no special flood hazard area on the property, and there are no structures or existing utilities on the subject property. Proposed lots, one and Lot two, will be ten-point-zero-nine acres each. Applicant has applied to rezone both lots to limited agriculture district under rezone nineteen eleven, which is the next agenda item. Lot two will continue to take access off of Dakota Road. Lot one will take access off of a forty-foot private access easement. Due to the steep topography of the area and limited expected travel, the applicant has requested to waive the following subdivision regulations. Section five hundred point five, Table one, specifically road design standards for a limited agriculture district, turnarounds, and length of a dead-end road, as well as section five hundred point five, one eighty-three, specifically the maximum number of lots and access easement shall serve in a limited agriculture district. Staff does not object to either of these requests. Layout plan and variance requests were sent out for interdepartmental review with no significant comments to report. For purposes of layout plan, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. Therefore, staff recommends approval of subdivision regulations variance nineteen oh seven and approval of layout plan nineteen twenty-four with six conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mark.
Just clarify for me how Lot one is going to be access?
Yes, sir. So, you can see here in the middle of Lot two, there will be a forty-foot wide access easement.
Okay.
Currently, you can see it here. It's cut in basically to the side of the hill.
I see.
See, the topography is very steep in that area, so they have that access cut in there now, and they're just going to formally plaque that easement.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Additional questions for staff? Are there any questions from the audience on this item? Sir, are you here to talk about this item or the next item? Okay. Seeing none, recommendation for staff is to recommend approval of subdivision regulations, or regulations variance SV nineteen dash zero seven, to waive the following two subdivision regulations. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion around the item? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. And then, the next one is the recommendation for the approval of the layout plan, LPL nineteen dash twenty-four, with the following six conditions. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Both of those carry. Brings us to item twenty.
Agenda item twenty is rezone nineteen eleven and Comprehensive Plan Amendment nineteen eleven. The applicant has submitted a request to rezone twenty-point-one-nine acres from general agriculture district to limited agriculture district, and to amend the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan to change future land use from planned unit development sensitive district to limited agriculture district. As we discussed, the applicant is in the process of subdividing the subject property into two lots, and neither will meet minimum lot size or current zoning of general agriculture districts.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, recommendation is for approval of rezone nineteen dash eleven and Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA nineteen dash eleven. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Sorry to go back, but on item nineteen, I happened to notice a typo as I was flipping through, as we were getting ready to flip through, and this is just a point of making a note for correction. On page five of five, item number seven, at the very bottom, the very last, well, the whole sentence, it says, "Operating permit is obtained prior to the Mylar being filed with the Register of Deeds." I believe you mean the plant, the minor plant. Is it just a typo?
So, you're on nineteen?
Eighteen. It's eighteen, page five of five.
Item number seven says Mylar.
On the last line.
Which item are you on, Travis?
Item number eighteen.
Page five of five, number seven?
Five of five, yes. It says Mylar instead of minor plant. It looks like it should say minor plant.
What she's referring to is the actual Mylar with the signatures that gets filed with the Register of Deeds, so prior to them actually filing that piece of paper formally with the Register of Deeds.
I was just thinking of a particular material. I guess I don't remember ever seeing Mylar. Reg, uh, said like that before. Maybe I've just skipped over them all the time. It just, it just stuck out at me. I was like, maybe they're trying to say minor plant, but, okay, my mistake.
Don't use the word very often, so.
All right, well then, pardon me on that one.
What does it mean?
It's just the type of paper that they actually print, the, once the plat is totally approved by all the approving bodies, they print it on what's called Mylar paper. It's kind of transparent paper. That's where they get all the signatures from, and that's what formally gets filed with the Register of Deeds.
Kind of a layover, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. It's kind of like that.
See the maps underneath it?
Yeah.
I mean, I knew what Mylar balloons were, but now it makes sense. Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize.
There's no reason to reconsider that item at this point.
No, there's not. I just, I just wanted to make sure, because I was like, huh.
Okay. That brings us on-
Clarification, Cassie?
Yes.
Yeah, no kidding.
Let's move to item twenty-one.
Item twenty-one is the County Border Report. The Border Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the July twenty-second, two thousand nineteen Planning Commission meeting.
Any questions on item twenty-one? Seeing none, we'll move to item twenty-two, items from the public. Sir, do you have any comments?
I just would like a clarification on that.
Please come forward and, yeah, and state your name for the-
My name is Dwayne Galke. I own Lot eighteen and seventeen on Gold Mountain subdivision.
Okay.
And I had made the request to combine the two lots.
Yes, sir.
And as of your approval, but I see on the approval, there's subject to nine conditions.
Yes.
And I would like some clarification on that, if I may.
Well, we'll see if we can get these answered. If it's something that we need to vote on, we'll need to reconsider this item, but go ahead and ask your questions, sir.
Yeah, the only thing is, I was, it asked for nine conditions, and all of these are easily answered. It says on this that the septic was pumped back in twenty-ten, which would actually was pumped a month ago, and I do have that. So, I mean, but I guess I ask you what I have to do now, just for final consideration, if there's any.
So, these items of approval need to be followed, so that essentially, your, the gentleman that's working on your plat will need to understand these items, so he takes care of the minimum eight-foot minor and drainage utility easements when he, when he redoes the plat for your property. The, I will have you review section four hundred point three of the Pennington County subdivision regulations. That's item number two. You can go through those questions with staff. Let me see here. Walk me through the rest of these, if you would, Cassie.
They're pretty standard conditions of approval. Most of them are actually, a lot of times met. They're just things that you need to continue to follow. In terms of your septic system, I would say take that receipt that you have, take that right upstairs and talk to Brittany-
Okay.
-and then she'll be able to help you get that whole one figured out, because essentially, that's about the only one on here that isn't a pretty standard condition.
Possibly.
Yeah, yeah.
And now, is this subject to a second meeting, or?
Yes, sir. So, this is the layout plat. This is the first stage. It's basically a general review of the process from us. Now that we have reviewed it and approved the layout plat, these conditions then go back to you and your surveyor that's working on your plat, and he will incorporate these conditions along with conversations with the county to submit, will this just be a minor plat?
Yes, yep.
Okay.
Yep. So, then you'll just have one more step in the plating process, which is called a minor plat.
And that is what, two weeks from now, or when?
Well, it depends on, you'll have to fill out another application. The planning staff up at the, when you go submit this to them, they can explain it as well.
Okay, okay, because, because I am on hold and winter's coming, and I would like to put a building on that second.
Certainly.
Sure.
All right. I guess that answers it for me.
Yes, if you stop up and talk with the planning staff, as well as your surveyor, we will move it through.
That's the other question. Well, this, these lots were surveyed when we bought them.
Yes.
Do they have to be resurveyed again?
I don't know the specific answer to that, but there is a plat that needs to be generated that combines these two lots.
There is a plat on our map and all the pins are, so I don't know, but I just didn't want to refer it to survey.
Yeah, if the fieldwork's done, but certainly someone's going to need to generate the plat, so.
Yep, yep. Just go right up the stairs in the first office on the left-hand side.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir, for your questions. Brings us to item twenty-three.
Item twenty-three is items from the staff. The only thing I have today is the July building permit report. We're finally back up a little bit in terms of valuation. We're still down in terms of the number of permits that we've issued year-to-date. Single-family residences went up quite a bit last, last month. We issued nineteen permits for single-family residences. Also, of note, residential additions are up pretty substantially over last year in terms of valuation, not in terms of number. So, people aren't adding as many additions, but they're adding more expensive additions. But overall, we are up twelve percent in valuation, but we're still down twenty-two percent in total numbers. Last year at this time, we had issued five hundred and eighteen permits. We've only issued four hundred and four this year.
Chair?
Go ahead, Kathy.
Just one question. What's a transient shelter?
What we consider transient shelters, those big numbers that you see, most of those were the tents for, under canvas. Transient shelters, we consider things that are meant to be used for people who are more temporary in nature, so not like your hotels, motels, or anything like that. It's things more like, that don't get used all year round. So, those tents at, under canvas, or occasionally we'll stick a guest house under there, things like that, things that are more meant to be seasonal uses.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions on item twenty-three? Seeing none. Item twenty-four, items from the membership? Okay. Seeing none. Brings us to item twenty-five, adjournment. Is there a motion?
I motion, to adjourn.
Motion and second. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.